I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Bobby, if you'd call roll, please.
Commissioner Nathan Leicher.
Here.
Chair Neil Younger.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Burgess.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, um, order of business stays the same. Um, I appreciate everybody coming, and we got the law enforcement here, which I hope we don't need it, but we're here. Thanks for your services. Um, prior minutes, everybody have a chance to look at those?
Yep, I'm going to approve the prior minutes.
The consent agenda, everybody had a chance to look at that?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through G.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, motion approved. Um, anyone from the audience like to speak? Okay. All right, Jennifer, introduction of the new employees.
Good morning, Jennifer Taylor, Ellis County H R. I have two departments here, I have a big group, and I have elected officials and department heads that are going to introduce their staff.
Hello, Ellis County Treasurer, good morning.
Um, I have three new motor vehicle clerks started yesterday. I have Carla Betzold, Janet Comer, and Michelle Bond. So they came and were ready to put them to work.
Welcome aboard.
Good morning, Danita Schrader, Ellis County M S. I have three new employees with us today. Um, we'll start with Myron. Myron Drelling's gonna help us out part-time. Um, he's been in Ellis County for a number of years, so he knows the area well. Jessica Straight, here in her uniform, she's starting today. Um, she's from Ellis County as well, she's an E M T, she's gonna work full-time for us. And Reese Myers, she's gonna work part-time for us, she's from Ellis County as well, and she's an E M T. And she'll, both Myron and Reese will start next week with us.
Okay, welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. Big group.
Good group. Um, High Plains Mental Health, Walt and Kaylee.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Walt Hill, I'm the Executive Director of High Plains Mental Health Center. Um, I do read my mail, and I got this great letter from Darren and you all, and first of all, I want to thank you for your decision to fund us at High Plains at the level that we requested. We know that was an increase, but it was a, was consistent with the benchmark model that we ask all counties to follow. Not all counties follow that. It's very helpful when Ellis County does, because you demonstrate a great deal of leadership. Other counties look to what decisions you make about funding to the mental health center, the other nineteen counties that are part of the interlocal agreement. Uh, so thank you very much, we appreciate that for 2024. Wanted to provide some updates to you. Um, I remember when Commissioner Younger was a very new commissioner, he had suggested it would be a good idea for outside agencies who are getting funding to come and provide updates to the commission, and we've heard that loud and clear. In fact, um, we are asking our board to talk with other counties and see if that is something that they would find beneficial for us to go out. We go out once a year sometimes, unless there's a problem, then we go out, but doing more routine updates with our board. So thank you for your leadership on that, it's a, a great idea, we'll, uh, I think it will help. Um, you know, our counties invest about three-quarters of a million dollars in our services, and I think it's important for you to see what those dollars are doing and how we're growing. Um, next year is our sixtieth anniversary since the inception of High Plains Mental Health. Uh, over the course of next year, I think you'll be seeing some events celebrating that and some, uh, new directions also we're taking in the area of added fundraising emphasis, uh, to add to the available resources, not just state and county and, and Medicaid and insurance funding, but also additional, uh, giving, uh, from donors. So we'll be having some events around the anniversary and also to kick off, uh, some fundraising. Um, you'll see some signs around town that say "Save the Date." I'm not, I can't tell you what that's about, but, uh, there's something coming. We'll be having an event in, uh, this mid-year. The, uh, you, in the letter, it asked what we're doing with the funding from the counties. Um, we continue to serve half of our patients who have income, family incomes under $25,000. Many of those do not have Medicaid. Um, that, uh, creates a, a challenge and other, we have to find other places to pick up the funding to serve those who do not have insurance. Um, I was listening to a recent meeting where Commissioner Burgess talked about Medicaid expansion and how that would be helpful. Also, the, the whole process that's happened where the state has not sent back funds to the counties for, which become unfunded mandates for you. So we use the county funding to subsidize care to those that don't have insurance, um, or any other way to pay for services. We are obligated to do that. So that provides a base funding. The newest, uh, thing that's happened is our becoming a certified community behavioral health clinic. I almost said C C B H C, but we use so many abbreviations, it just, it, but C C B H C. C C B H C was a federal initiative to formalize and raise the bar of services by community mental health centers across the country. Um, there was no prior federal definition of a community mental health center, so the feds set up C C B H C and raised the bar with a set of criteria for additional services that C M H Cs who wanted to be a C C B H C, uh, would aspire to and, and deliver, an enhanced range of services. The state of Kansas picked up that ball and moved ahead. Uh, we were one of the, High Plains is one of the first six mental health centers to be state certified as a C C B H C. We just, uh, went through our, uh, most recent certification, final certification visit after a year and a half of grad, uh, initial certifications. What that brings is a range of additional services for the community. Um, it also brings a different type of Medicaid reimbursement for our services that is based on cost as opposed to fee for service, which allows us to cover more of our costs and be less reliant on state and county funding to pay for, um, that range of services. We started with $3 million in federal grants and built out quite a few additional services. The question we always had along is how do we continue to maintain those services? Because we weren't gonna come back to you all and say, hey, we, we need help. That's why, so we have been successful in switching over to the new Medicaid reimbursement model, that significantly improved reimbursement rates, and have been able to capture that $3 million ongoing to keep in place those additional re, uh, staff and program resources that we developed with the past couple of years of, uh, federal, uh, grants. Some of those programs include, uh, assisted outpatient treatment for individuals who are court-ordered because of their mental illness, they don't really understand their need for treatment. Uh, we work with the court, uh, to help those folks understand they need to continue in treatment, continue medication. We have jail liaisons, um, throughout the area that work with, uh, our jails, because we, I was just talking with sheriff about the number of people in jail who have mental illness, and we put these positions in place to help coordinate those services, uh, to get people treatment, uh, in a bit easier way, a place that sheriffs can contact us. We've added substance abuse treatment, particularly something called medication assisted treatment, or M A T. It's treatment for people that have opioid dependency, and it's some special medications, um, that help them through process, initial couple of years of recovery from opioid dependency. Opioid dependency has become a huge, huge issue, and it's not just in cities, it's, we have heroin, uh, addiction in our area. People get started on prescription pain medicine, they get cut off that, and they wind up switching to, uh, heroin. Uh, so this is a medication treatment and, uh, addiction treatment to help people move away from that with some new medications, uh, that are successful. We added care navigators, so when people call in, uh, we have five staff who help them get to the right place and follow up on their care. Um, we, um, have added care coordination nurses who are coordinating with doctors' offices about the physical health care of, needs of our patients. Um, we've expanded a great deal in school-based mental health. Believe we have, um, services delivered in all but a couple of the school buildings in our whole region, with liaisons that connect the school with therapists who either go into the school, or we've placed iPads in those schools, so kids and families during the school day can connect with the therapist and get services, uh, at the school. Um, we have, um, continued to partner with the district court, Judge Brown with the drug court. We, uh, that was separate pot of funding, uh, but, uh, we have a therapist, Amy Byrd, that works with drug court, uh, around providing input on the mental health needs of those individuals. So, uh, assisted outpatient's kind of the mental health cousin of drug court, and, uh, so we're much more involved with, uh, those courts. We developed a supportive employment program to help individuals who have long-term mental illness to seek and get ready to go back into the, the workforce if they can and, uh, want to. Um, and, um, we've done quite a bit more in terms of outreach into three particular populations that were, uh, we identified, agriculture community and the mental health needs of agriculture. We've done several community events on agriculture, mental health. Um, we, uh, have identified the Hispanic population as a growing population in our area that needs access to mental health services. So we've hired several Hispanic liaison staff who work with those communities. We've partnered with one of the Catholic churches here who has a large Hispanic ministry, and, uh, reaching out to the, the Hispanic population there in what to them is a safe place. We go into Goodland, uh, work with a Hispanic, uh, coordination group in Goodland about getting folks access there. Uh, so that's just a quick overview, as quick as I could say it, of the various things we've added. Again, we've really raised the bar with additional services, and, um, what your funding does is, uh, continues to allow us to serve people regardless of whether they can pay for, uh, services or not. So, I'll stand for questions or anything I could address.
Well, I'd like to, uh, first off, congratulate your, congratulate you on your prior announcement, uh, from about a month or two ago.
I've been sold, I think I forgot what that was.
Those are, those are gonna be some solid footsteps to follow.
Thank you.
Uh, but I would ask, where are, there's gonna be shortcomings with everything. Where are we falling short, and what can we do to help bridge some of those shortcomings?
Um.
I guess what would be one thing that you could identify that we as a community maybe need to look at to take over, or pick up, or help with?
Uh, I think drug and alcohol issues are important component. I think homelessness, which looks different here than it does in cities. Um, I think education about mental health issues, particularly in the area of prevention in school-aged kids, very concerned about bullying and other issues. So we've initiated a, a project to take what's called mental health first aid for school-aged children, certain age group, to help them understand more about mental health and being helpful to people around them who have mental health problems. I think, um, the interface with law enforcement and other healthcare is important. Uh, so it's hard to nail down one thing. I would say, if you can continue to fund us at the level, that's, it, you know, it's, uh, we're up to about a $16 million, um, budget, uh, grown substantially, and we have tried to keep county funding as level as possible, but they're just, we need that backfill, uh, for the, uh, the most needy in the community that don't have, uh, insurance.
Thank you.
Michael?
Uh, I didn't prep you for this, Paul, but as I was listening to you, I mean, 16 million's a lot of money. Can you speak to what the cost is, though, without these services?
So 60 million?
16 million, you said that. I mean, that's, it's a lot of funding to, to, to run these programs.
Right.
But without your services, what would the, the cost be to communities?
Oh, I, the estimates are, be five to 10 times that in terms of the fallout, uh, law enforcement, other social services deeds. Uh, you know, we have a, so much already of, uh, so many individuals with suicidal ideation and suicide attempts. Uh, I think the jails, we're concerned how many folks in jail have mental illness, but I would suspect the jail, you would need to build another floor in the jail. Um, more law enforcement officers. Um, I think it would be tragic, and it would be, um, at the hu, the human cost of that would be, um, startling. I don't even want to think about that, but, uh.
And again, I'd like to thank you too for all you've done.
Thank you.
Community over the years, and it's.
Thank you.
Like Commissioner Leicher said, it's gonna be hard footsteps to fill. Um, not only that, is the mental health does continue to grow, plus drugs. Now the community can see, you only had one page, I'm sure you could've went on and on what these funds are all used for.
Yes.
So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, the other question is, unlike one of the families, is there a percentage that you do? do? How many do you do per year, per month? Does it vary? As you said, you know, sometimes you're funding them 25,000 in additional funding, under 25,000.
Right, right. So I'm not sure quite.
Is it a percentage that you do of?
Okay, so we have a base, we have a base.
There you go.
What's that, base funding?
Charge.
A nominal fee.
A nominal fee. That comes from some other federal programs and that's $20.
Okay.
However, I see many requests for uncompensated care. I review those, Whitney reviews those. Every day I probably sign off on two or three of those where we don't charge people anything or give them 99% break. So, but the base is, because of some other federal programs, we have to have that $20 minimal fee, but often, you know, the truth is, people often don't pay and our accounts receivable. And we work those, we work them through the debt set off program, but if people can't pay, they can't pay.
And the other thing I heard you say about the fundraising, kudos for you guys.
Thank you. Well, we have a gentleman here who we've already anointed as, standing up there, shout out your name.
James Kirshner.
James has been with us. He's done fundraising at Fort Hayes, at some other university settings. He will be moving into that fundraising position. He already is starting some of that and you'll be hearing a lot more from him on that, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Walt.
Thank you. Anything else?
Walt, I know you've got a lot going on.
Well, thank you. Yeah, it's shoes to fill, stepping out is a little tough. I've done this for 45 years, not being a director, but we've come a long ways. We are in the process of recruiting replacement. We're using a national search firm to make sure we're finding the best applicant to step into this position. They're in the process of that recruitment and search. Hopefully that will be finalized in the next month or so and I have a long time Christmas gift to stay him at home after the first of the year. Though it may not be a truly gift for my wife, but we'll see. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay, county attorney's office update? Not present? Okay. Okay, we will move on to the wage and benefits.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Braden Park. I guess before I get started, I'll introduce some of our other committee members here. For the elected officials and department heads, we have Scott Brown, Bern Ruder. For public works, we have Ron Weiser, Melvin Kierkenek. For the office administrative side, we have Mike Weber. It looks like Chris Polifka was unable to make it. Also from the sheriff's office, we have Dustin Barnes. And it looks like neither of our EMS were able to make it. Those are Jeremiah Brown and Richard Hanks. Today I'm here before you for, to give you just some information, reference our 2024 insurance renewal that is next on the agenda. So the good news to start is insurance premiums are down 4.4% last year compared to the, I think it was a 16% increase if I remember correctly, last year. So that's great news. We get to build into our reserves. We did make two changes on some of the plans. That is going to be the Plan A single, the yearly premium was raised $20, and the Plan C family, that was raised $100. FCMI came to us this year with a possible new benefit to offer to our employees, that is the Massa Medical Transport Solutions. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to read through the brochures that were in the agenda, but it's a great new benefit for employees if approved. Then we've elected to hold off on any wage proposal until the findings of the Arnold Group Wage Study is done. So if you have any questions?
Is the Massa, is that built in or is that a separate?
So.
Like it as a separate benefit?
That will come out of the reserves. We've elected to have that paid for from the reserve program or reserve budget. I believe it was around $12,000 if I remember correctly from the meeting last week to cover all the employees. So if that's used once, it's paid for.
What's the air transport that we have here? I assume it's going to, it would cover that service, right?
Air Med Care.
Air Med Care is the current one, but Eagle Med is the?
Eagle Med, okay.
Okay, I'd just like to thank all the ones that are on the committee for putting their, you know, input in, so, and thank you.
And we do want to thank Darren for coming to all the meetings as well as our HR, Jennifer and Janet for attending as well, always providing great input.
I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the 2024 health insurance renewals, Darren?
Morning, commissioners. Darren Myers, county administrator. Just to build on the discussion from Braden, I'd also like to thank all those members that Braden mentioned as part of the Wage and Benefit Committee. They all spend quite a bit of time helping us work through these and have a, have a good voice for the employees throughout the county. They do take both sides into account. I'll give them credit for that. Not only are they trying to do what's best for the employees, but they also take consideration of how it does impact the county financially as well from when we start looking at our, like our budget or our healthcare reserve account, so. But like I said, to build on that, as Braden said, we did have insurance decrease for next year of 4.4. That's including all plans across the board between Plan A and Plan C. Plan A is a traditional, Plan C is the high deductible plan. And as the agenda shows, a whole bunch of numbers, I won't go through all those for you because they're there for you and you'll probably forget them five minutes after we're done anyway. The main point is that the overall plan did decrease for our health insurance, but the Delta Dental was on a three-year renewal rate, so this is our last year of that, and it did have a 7% increase. But 7% increase on $30 a month is very minimal in the overall grand scheme of things compared to a 500 to $2,000 premium on a health plan. So building off of that, one thing that they did mention was looking at how the plans work and how much goes back into reserves. They made two, suggested two changes. Plan A single, increasing it from 740 to 760 a month. That 760 is before any insurance premium discounts. So if the employees complete their preventative care checklist, they can get a, for a single plan, $20 a month, for a family plan, $40 a month discount. And then after that discount, the county pays 86% of that and the employee pays 14%. So when you look at that Plan A single increase of $20 a month, that equals out to be $1.40 a check per employee that's on that plan. And then for the Plan C family, they elected or suggested to increase that by $100 a month, which is, equals out to be $7 per paycheck per employee that's on that plan. How that all works is the, as you can tell when you look at the numbers, a Plan A premium is 760, but the Blue Cross Blue Shield portion of that's only about 500. The difference is in that gap is how we reserve or put money into our reserve accounts. So when you look at it a little bit more, between that gap of the 760 and the 500 and some dollars a month for that plan, there's money that is deducted out of that to pay for FCMI, which is $21 a month per employee. That rate is a renewal rate for next year that did not increase the money that we've put into their individual Delta Dental premium plans. And then as Braden suggested, the Massa, the ground and air ambulance plans, that those rates were $3 for a single per month and $6.50 per employee, spouse, boy, child or a family plan. And then when you take all that out, whatever's left over is the money that gets put into our reserve account. I did update those numbers last, or yesterday, and our, for the first time this month, those rates are starting to start to climb again. For the first six months or the first eight months of the year, we've had a steady decrease of about 1,000 to 2,000 a month. And I think last month we had about a $10,000 increase. So there's about $1,058,000 in that reserve fund, which is well over the amount suggested or recommended from FCMI to have that fund. So the fund is stable and it will actually start to look better next year as we see the decrease in insurance by keeping the premiums the same. The decrease in the insurance premiums, whatever that amount is per plan, that same amount will be increased essentially for the money that is put into reserves. One change that I did put in here from what the Wage and Benefit Committee suggested was the raising the Plan C family. They suggested $100 a month. I'm recommending we change that to 105 after doing some more calculations after our meeting last week. I suggest I added another $5 to that, so instead of it being 2,000, $35 a month, it'd be 2,040. And the reason for that is when I backbuilt in the Massa ground and air transportation plan, that was to increase that premium just enough so that way that anybody on that plan would still be putting money into reserves every month instead of basically being at just, basically a negative amount of a couple of dollars. Like I say, I could go through the numbers a lot different, a lot, a lot more if you like. It's kind of spelt out on the final chart of how each plan is built out from the premium and the amounts paid either for an HSA for the Plan C or the Blue Cross, the Dental, the Massa and the reserves. With that, we just ask for a motion to accept the renewal rates from Delta Dental, Blue Cross Blue Shield and FCMI for the 2024 plan year.
Any questions, fellas? Comments?
So 4% decrease off last year, but we increased the budget by 10% across the board on this, so we'll be realizing, I mean, from a budget perspective, we'll be realizing about a 14%, all right, decrease off what we budgeted.
On that final, thank you for bringing that up. I forgot to mention that. When I ran the numbers after the meeting, because I didn't want to run a whole bunch of scenarios, when I ran the budget numbers after the meeting by keeping the rates essentially the same, that's about $260,000 in overall general fund budget that won't need to be used for health insurance premiums. And that will be realized when we do the wage adjustments, that all those, all those line items in every single department will be decreased because the rates won't be increased by 10% like we had planned. And then the commission can use that funding, kind of like I mentioned, that when we do the wage study, if we needed some extra funds to be able to use for that, if there are some big changes needed, that would be one option that the commission could tap into without having to pull it from somewhere else.
Even though we had a decrease this year, we've had increases over the past several years, have we not?
Yeah, I don't remember who I was visiting with the other day, but I don't, in my nine years, 10 years with the county, we've never seen a decrease. And I think it maybe was Mr. Jeter. Before that, we were on the state employee health plan and I don't foresee the state ever having a decrease. I don't know if Scott, he's been here for a while, and Bobby, Janet, but yeah, this is probably the first time in a long time. Our utilization, they usually try to get you to plan on being at about 100%, 90, I think it was about 96 to 100% of what they recommend. When we saw the increase for this year at 16%, our utilization rate was at 100, I think 15 or so percent. I don't remember the exact number, but last year it's 76. So that helped on our claims and everything. We didn't have a lot of utilization, so that helped us with our premiums.
Okay. Will this be okay for the additional employees that we're bringing on?
Correct.
All the departments?
Yep.
As far as the HSA, in my place of employment, I can opt out of it. Is that the same way through the insurance here?
So you don't have to do your HSA if you don't like to. Most likely if you don't choose to do the HSA, you go back to Plan A.
Okay.
The difference basically between Plan A and Plan C is that high deductible plan, so you have more pocket, more out of pocket expense. However, part of the money that you're not just throwing away into a premium, it goes into your HSA. So that way, if you ever do have a medical incident or a need, you have that money. And as you can tell from the plan or the sheet, depending on which plan you're at, you can have up to like $83 per month for a single, up to 145 for an employee-child plan. So you have that for, to be eligible for the HSA, you have to contribute $25 per check individually out of your own pocket, which is pre-tax. And then if you choose or you like to do the preventative care checklist for both you or your spouse, you are eligible for an additional 500 to $1,000 a year as well to be dumped into your HSA.
I, I do highly recommend that, not wanting to sound like anybody's dad or whatever, but when you do need it, it's there and it does, it does work, speaking from experience, so. That's all I have, Darren.
Well, I think across the board, that's good news, lower premiums, so. I'll move to approve the renewals for Blue Cross Blue Shield, Delta Dental, FCMI, MASA Membership 2024 premium rates and authorize the county administrator to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thanks, Darren. You're back on the hot seat, Darren, for the PTO buyback.
This is the, a new policy change for a pay, a pay time off sellback program. And I got to give credit where credit is due on this one. Jennifer in HR did most of the heavy lifting on this and researching other policies that were out there that are local as well as contacting the IRS to make sure that we are following the IRS guidelines to how the policy has to be implemented and worked as well as visiting with KCAMP and their attorney assist program to ensure that legally, I guess, from an HR perspective, we are doing what's correct. And before you today is the suggested item that we would add into the personnel policy. One would be in the regular section for the actual program itself, the guidelines, and then an appendix that would be added to the personnel policy for the actual form that employees would fill out to request it. As you can tell on the policy, it's basically, it's not completely open to everybody. This was reviewed, Jennifer, Janet, myself, and it was taken to the executive team, for the executive team to have input on some of the numbers and the dates. And then we reviewed it with the Wage and Benefit Committee last week as well. It will limit some employees to not be able to use it, the thought process behind that. For instance, one would be the amount of hours an employee must have before they can sell back some of their PTO is to ensure that an employee doesn't sell all of their PTO back or a large portion of it and then have nothing left, which would then, I guess, hurt them if something were to happen and they wouldn't have any PTO built up. So the minimum amounts were decided by the executive team for, or for regular employees and then the irregular employees from EMS. I know that sounds wrong, but they have a different schedule, they're not irregular, but they work more hours, so they accrue more PTO as well. That's why those numbers are different between the two EMS and regular staff. But, um, they work more hours, so they're, they accrue more PTO as well. That's why those numbers are different between the two EMS and regular staff. Uh, with this, uh, this would be a kind of a different plan this year as we would present this to the employees next week at the, at the in-service training day. Give them the forms and they would return it, the form back to HR by the time open enrollment ends. So that way, it's all set in place this year and, uh, we can build it into the plan when we make the wage adjustments later this year. I can add that in. If you remember, the commission set aside a certain amount of money in the budget stabilization account that will be transferred into individual bu- the budgets based on who would like to use the program next year. Um, and then, starting next year, uh, HR or we'll get the form out and employees will have to submit it to HR before the, I think, June 1st deadline. And it would be paid out the following year. So now we're looking into 2025, that second payroll in April. And there wasn't really a whole lot of thought process into April, except for trying to keep it separate from longevity for purposes of, um, not having too much burden on Janet at the end of the year of doing multiple payouts. Uh, another reason for April was tax season. Some people, uh, could use it to pay taxes. But also it's close to the end of the school year and in the summer months that if an employee maybe even wanted to cash it out then to use it for a family vacation or something over the summer, they could use it as well. So those are some of the thought processes of how we got to where we're at with the policy in regards to what we could do from what the limitations are from IRS.
Is the, uh, the Wage and Benefits Committee, I guess they're, they're all on board with this whole program or?
Yeah, they were.
Or is there any good discussion on?
I think they would like to have seen, um, maybe less hours, uh, overall from being deducted, uh, using the extended leave instead of the, your PTO bank. But when, uh, it just came down to it, and then also, uh, another big piece that a lot of the employees asked, depending on if they would use it, is it, if it's irrevocable or not. So once you submit it, um, can you change your mind two months later? And with the research that Jennifer did with the IRS, it's, once it's in there, it's irrevocable and it's in place. So obviously, I think something could happen in the next two, three, four months after you fill one out that you would like to have that PTO back, but that's not an option that we have. So that was one thing that, that was kind of asked from the Wage and Benefit Committee, um, from the beginning. Uh, the, I mean, I don't know if anybody want to, we had a decent discussion on it. It wasn't, I don't think there was anything negative, but they wanted to speak to it. They could, I guess. I don't want to speak for them.
Alright. Michael?
I, I don't have any questions. Thanks for everybody. I know you guys have been working and considering this for most of the year and working on it. So I, um, I think any kind of options as far as benefits to employees is always a good thing to take under consideration. So I appreciate this coming to us.
Yeah. Uh, like I say, at least we're offering it to them and if they want it, how many are interested? I mean, just through, uh?
When we started, you know, it was a very generic question that I asked the employees. It was a basic, simple thing is that if we offered this program, would you be interested? And I saved the list of everybody that contacted me. I thought I had the total number here, but it was, it was just over 100, uh, 100 employees. And some of it were generic, like the sheriff's office, the sheriff emailed back after he had a staff meeting. Said the majority of them were in favor for it. The treasurer did the same. A lot of individual questions, uh, that came about. I think everybody was, there was over 100 employees that were in favor of it, but without knowing what the actual policy was going to look like, nobody would actually truly say, "Yeah, I'm going to do it." Some of the things was, would it be irrevocable, uh, the minimum amount of hours, the number of hours, uh, and things like that. So I think now that the policy's in there, um, people will be able to make the decision. We'll explain a good Monday at the in-service training next week. And, uh, I think Jennifer's got that on her list to, to visit with everybody and fully inform everybody of how it all works. And, um, they'll have a month, uh, about a month and a half for open enrollment to be able to make that decision before they turn the form in. So I'm, I'm, if I were to guess, that number of, will be a lot less than people were, that were originally interested based on the parameters of the program.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, well, I'll move to approve the PTO sellback policy addition as section 9.11 in the personnel policy.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay, thanks, Darren. Uh, Noxious Weed, Brendan?
Morning Commissioners, Brendan McKay, Ellis County Public Works Director. So with the additional staff that's going to be added to Noxious Weed Department, found the need to add an additional truck to their fleet. The additional truck would be utilized to pull out the nurse trailer to their big injection pump spray rigs. Help when they do the tree removal and trash pickup by pulling a trailer. Also looking at gaining them a fuel trailer to pull out, fuel trailer out to mowers that are stationed out in the field and all the other equipment that they have. With that in mind, it wasn't budgeted for, but the talks were, we have a good truck that we were trading in. We've already ordered the replacement. Instead of trading that truck in, but hold, we'd like to hold on to it for an additional year and order a replacement in '25. Because with, they have two big trucks, an F-550 and a large international. Those are like pieces of equipment. They're like a motor grader. Those are not to haul crew around. They're not going to be pulling trailers for debris. They have quite expensive mechanical pump systems on them that just driving them out to go pick up a limb is not the best for those qu- pieces of equipment. So they have two smaller fleet vehicles, a three, the two, three quarter tons and a half ton that we've ordered. That's why we would like to try and hold on to this one if, if approved.
How many miles are on this, uh, 28A?
Now you're gonna ask that and I left it down on my desk. I would say it's probably close to 60,000 at this point, if not a little more.
Okay. And will you maintain these vehicles in-house?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this is probably, this is one of the better vehicles that we have in the fleet currently?
Yes.
You know, with 60,000, that's?
It, it may be more. I, I left, I wrote it down on my notebook and I left my notebook at my desk when I ran over to pick up a.
Even if it's 70, you know, that's still.
Yeah. The, the truck's in great shape. It needs tires. So before putting tires on it, I asked Gary to hold off on getting tires for it until we have the discussion. Because if you guys say no, we won't put tires on it to get rid of it, because we won't get that value back out of them.
So this 28A, is this currently under Noxious Weed or currently under?
Noxious Weed.
But, oh, so it is a, so it's already there?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if it was coming from Public Works over to?
No, sir. It's already currently one of their spray trucks. It was planned to be replaced with a half ton pickup, a crew cab, because there was better resale value for the county. It made more sense to downsize that one and get something that the county will see more return on to help offset the cost of these other vehicles for the rest of the departments. But with that said, this extra three quarter ton, it'd be nice to have that to pull a 600 gallon fuel tank, trailer, their dump trailer for when they're doing tree and trash removal. And then also with the plowing that they'll be doing this, in the winter time, having an additional three quarter ton truck to do the plowing. Because we'll put a plow on that truck and then one on Public Works for them.
Okay.
Michael?
Nah, it works for me, I guess. It's fine.
I support it. Keep it and run it. Alright.
Uh, okay. I guess, do we need to make a motion or don't?
Since it's in the fleet already.
Yeah.
And this just goes back to the thought process that if, the original plan was, as Brendan said, this is a replacement. So we would order the new one. We would sell the other one on Purple Wave to help pay for the offset of lease payments until the, we would cycle them in on an annual basis. Uh, but since this is the thought of adding a fleet to any department, this is, anytime we've added it, just for instance, the, uh, appraiser's office came in a couple of months ago to expand their fleet. Um, we're expanding it essentially. We're not replacing it yet since we didn't budget it for in 2024. But this time next year, we'll order a replacement and budget for it in 2025. So their fleet would be plus one come 2025. So, uh, we're just asking to do that now.
Okay. Yep. I'm good with that.
Okay, thanks, Brendan.
Alrighty, thank you.
How about an update on the road situation? I know you don't want to talk about it, but just so our community knows that we are out there and we are.
The roads are still there.
Yeah. Barely.
They haven't moved. But they've sunk down. So yes, with this drought that we've had and these extreme temperatures, our rock is soft. It turns to flour or powder. Everyone that's driven on county roads is aware of that. We had a war truck down most of this year. It's between the, we got two of them that are, well, they're not on their last legs. Those last legs have already fallen off. We're, we're trying to keep them going as best we can for now. And three water trucks and a water tanker when we can use the water tanker, that's, because that's also our only tractor trailer, or tractor truck that also moves our large equipment. Can't always have that tanker hooked up to it. Three and a half, three trucks, four if we're lucky, covering 1,370 miles of roadway, will never keep up, unfortunately. So we're doing what we can. We put out that PSA yesterday. We put cones in areas for where we have it. We pulled off other projects to get the war trucks back out on these problem areas where they're being hit. Doing what we can with what we have. Hopefully we'll get some rain tonight and it'll help pack and settle everything back down.
And, uh, as far as the mowing, what percentage are we there, just guessing?
So I know, when putting the sheet together for the monthly report yesterday, I have three full territories that are fully mowed out, uh, the 11. All the paved roads have been mowed and Noxious Weed. Every day we have those, all of the mowing tractors staffed, whether it's with Noxious Weed staff or Public Work Road and Bridge staff, except for the one that's been down as we're waiting for parts from Canada. But had people coming in early, staying late and coming in on weekends to help mow to keep up. We had that drought. Nothing grew. Had a bit of rain and then high temps, so everything grew quick, fast, and in a hurry. And 1,370 miles with four or five mowing tractors, it's going to take some time.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
We hit our primary, our FAS routes first. So that's every paved road and then all the major collectors. So the, the major routes you see on the unpaved roads. And after there, we start going to the secondary roads. So secondary roads are the ones that aren't traveled as often. There may not be, appearance wise, they're usually narrow right of ways because they were never expanded. Tenses are usually close and sometimes a right of way's been planted on by farmers. So they're, those are the last roads we hit.
Okay.
And just, just so people know, 1,370 miles times two sides.
Correct. And that doesn't include every little development too, that has additional roads.
Right.
So 1,376 on the grid plus all of the smaller area developments and things like that.
So, okay.
Alright. Thank you, Brendan.
I'm up for the next one too.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Truman, uh, Street Vacation?
Yep. So speaking of roads.
Vacating, I'm sorry. Yeah, not vacationing. I just got back from that.
So along 280th, there's Air Flight Drive next to it. In that first addition that was platted along 280th, there was a road called Truman Street. That road has never been built. It's actually been kind of used as a driveway. So when this developer platted his development off of Air Flight next to it, you can see there's a Truman Street there, uh, down the middle, bottom of the page for Darren's highlighting. They would like to vacate that stretch and sell those tracks as two five acre tracks. They feel it'd be more appealing for the market. And the way to do that would be to vacate Truman Street just in their addition. Not the one that's currently being used as a driveway for those individuals just south of Sheriff's House. As you can see, there's also Kennedy Street up there where there's not a road. And there's also at the very south end of the property, 30 feet of right of way for, I think it's Roosevelt Street. But it's not enough right of way to be a public road in the state of Kansas by statute. So none of those roads have been built. They, no intention of them ever being built. So they would like just to vacate that stretch through that, what they just had replatted, so they can sell those lots as two five acre lots. So I'm just basically asking for you guys' permission to go forward with it and then come back with a resolution for the road hearing with, talking with Bill on it.
Any issues, Mr. Leicher?
I have no issues with it. I, I know the road well and I know the area well. My only concern is with developments like this, and I know, uh, with having served on the zoning board, I always kind of push the issue of ingress and egress for our departments in case, in case we ever have to take off, over these roads or maintenance on them. Uh, you're not going to turn a grader around at the, at the bottom end.
So it is a public road, but they have not come before the board to ask for?
Right.
I need to maintain it at this point in time. It wouldn't be the first one with a cul-de-sac at the end of it. If you go out there right now, you can see that they put a cul-de-sac at the end. Their Truman Street could be built up. So could Kennedy Street, or the county could even purchase 30 feet from the neighboring property owner and build up Roosevelt Street if that was necessary. Generally, we, the county hasn't done that in the past. I wouldn't recommend we start that. Usually if they want a road to be built, they come before the county commission and hey, have it approved, and then it's built to the county standards, and then the county will take ownership of it. We haven't generally built, to my knowledge, roads for developments in the past. We leave that on the developer to build to our standards.
I believe it's in the zoning regs that the, the private roads are to be built to county standards. Is that, is that the case in this?
That's my understanding as well. So that way if they do request county to take over maintenance of, it's already to our standard. It's, it's not a very hard standard to hit.
Okay.
Being on the board, you've seen it. It's pretty cut and dry on it.
That just, I mean, to me, it makes sense to vacate it, um, another lot, bigger lot, generate tax revenue. So yeah, why not? I mean, why not? That'd be stupid to let that run right through the middle like that on a development.
Yeah, because the, the other road hasn't been built yet. So if they did build the road, it would just be for those two parcels. And they could connect, but assuming those people that live on the other side, they assume that is their property the way that vehicles and equipment have been parked in there. So that'd just be a can of worms that I don't think we really need to deal with.
Is, is the current Truman Street as it sits, is that actually 60 feet of right of way?
That's what was dedicated.
Okay, it was, it is there.
On both, yep.
Okay.
Both on the original development off of 280th and this one off of the Air Flight Drive.
Okay.
I don't have any questions or concerns.
Okay.
Alrighty, well, we can go ahead.
Yeah.
I'll work with Bill and we'll get a resolution drafted up and brought before you later.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Thanks, Brendan.
Thank you.
Okay, Commission Chambers, uh, training room upgrade, Darren?
Now, the next item is just to discuss the possibility of allowing staff within buildings and grounds to construct a wall at the back end of the commission chambers, which is pretty much where Mike's, in the area where Mike's stand, sitting. Um, we haven't got the exact determination, but, um, just wanted to get the permission from the commission first and then we'll get staff together and determine exactly where the wall will go in correlation to where the lights are at. Uh, there's some fire alarm and HVAC issues up in there, uh, that we have to work around. But the wall would basically be back behind where Mike was at. And, um, it wouldn't necessarily decrease the size of the commission chambers any. As you can tell, all the chairs that are in here now wouldn't be impacted. Um, we actually think we could get more in here if we actually put the chairs together, if we ever had a very large meeting. Uh, as you tell, today at this meeting, we had more people in the meeting room than we normally do and we still had plenty of room left. But the idea after that is to put that wall in there and then change the direction of the, um, I guess the, where the presenter, the front of the room would be, um, before where that column was at. There used to be, well, it's sitting behind me, a projector screen that came down from the ceiling. Uh, so you had to drop the ceiling, set up all the tables, set up all the chairs and get everything going for a class, uh, essentially that morning and then tear it down the night, the day at, the day of or after, uh, just to keep it open as a commission chamber. The direction of the new room would be that, the, essentially the north wall would be the front of the room. So that way you have a more of a, not so deep of a clasp, but everybody can see the front and, um, have the projector screen on that north wall. And then the main entry obviously would be from the glass doors in the back. And then we would still maintain the minimum routes of egress and ingress into the, both this room and the new room. The most expensive part to the room, since the sta- since staff, buildings and grounds would be doing most of the work themselves, would be getting an electrician and to, uh, run some additional power outlets into that wall. However, in speaking with the, with Greg with buildings and grounds, he needs to call one anyways. We had a, I- We had a, identified a shortfall at the law enforcement center where our phone system is plugged into a, essentially the same outlet that is tied into a water pump, a GFCI outlet. And they unplugged it, doing the HVAC work over there and plugged it back in and tripped the breakers and shut down all of the admin phones for sheriff, the police department and the dispatch center, not the nine one one number calls. So, we need to get an electrician anyway to run a whole new circuit over there for that. And then we'll just try to do that at the same time as this. But that would be the most expensive part that we'd have to go out of, out of house to have somebody come in and do the electrical work. But overall, like I say, you'll be able to, Greg and Keith will be able to do the project as, as needed, just like they did the IT room over last winter. This is a lot easier, just a straight wall. But before we make any modifications to a structure or to a building, we need to bring it to the Commission for approval first. So, that's what we're asking permission to proceed with.
I have no problems. It's, it's efficiency of space. So, if we can make our spaces more efficient and usable, I, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I don't have any concerns. I think it works.
I'm the same way. It's kind of wasted space back there. May as well put it to use and move forward.
We'll start devising a plan and hopefully, within the next couple of months, you'll see a, a new wall back there.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, hold on, Mike. Mike who did a poor van a white at that point.
If I may, Mike Leicher, Ellis County IT Director, just to make a point of clarification on the, the phone system in the law enforcement center. It wasn't our whole phone system that was on the standalone circuit. It was just the O N T box where the provider brings internet and phone into the building. So, we didn't wire a whole rack into a, into a pump receptacle, but just wanted to make that point of clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, got too technical.
That we know of, is there any other investigation going on that we have some kind of issues like this with other equipment that is very important throughout the, any of the buildings?
We are looking at the other buildings for this particular scenario. It was kind of a one-off. I know in most of the other buildings, it comes into our data center closet or, or room or whatever to where we, we've, we know that that is all on the, the e-power. So, but we're double checking all of those just to be sure.
Thank you.
Good question.
Thank you, Mike.
That is one thing. I got the draft RFP put together for the emergency generator at the law enforcement center too. And part of that building, Greg and I walked, I walked through it yesterday morning. There's with the remodel, you know, it's an old building. You got two buildings kind of tied together, two different service entries, one generator that actually serves half the building, not even half the building. It's hit and miss mainly for the dispatch center, but then it also has circuits that run over into the courthouse for Mike's data service center over there and some other equipment, but it's very minimal. So, Greg and I worked through that yesterday to make sure all the transfer switches. And then when we get that new generator sized, that the entire law enforcement center, not just dispatch and all the server rooms, all the HVACs, the elevators, the third floor, the kitchen, currently their jail's not, their, if they lose power, their jail kitchen, they can't serve food. So, that's part of this whole RFP process to get that generator properly sized so that way, if the law enforcement center goes down on e-power, we have a generator that, like we did with this building, the whole entire building will be on the load of the generator as well. So, that's, that's kind of one of the other thing that we're looking for. It's just, that's just going to take some time to get, hopefully, I get the RFP release next week. But when we ordered this generator for this building, it was a fifty-eight week lead time to get the generator. And it's, I think, Greg's not out there, but I think it's supposed to be delivered next month.
Oh.
So, we'll start seeing some progress there as well.
Okay.
Okay.
And then in regards to this generator, I did receive the bids back on Friday for the fence that we're putting out there. So, that'll be on next week's agenda to approve the fence. If, if the Commission wants to see anything, after the meeting, I can show you the pamphlets I have. I'm meeting with the contractor that submitted the bid after this meeting to look over some colors and make sure that we have our plan in place before I put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay. Pretty good.
County Administrator Report, Darren?
Uh, yeah, four things. First off, Jennifer in HR kind of started us on a new thing in our executive team meetings of starting off the meeting and giving kudos to different staff and that, that they're doing throughout the county. I thought of one thing yes, yesterday when I was actually visiting with Commissioner Leicher on the phone, I was sitting out at the new public work site, kind of amazed and seeing their, now that they actually are dedicating their time since they're not on asphalt roads, the, the amount of work that they're doing out there. It's different work than they're typically used to on roads, but if you have a chance, I would suggest going out there and looking before they start tearing it up to put in footings and such here in about a month. But they've done an amazing job out there. They moved a lot of dirt. They've hauled a lot of dirt in from the pond. Basically, almost all the buildings are at the point where they're almost ready to be turned over to the construction company. Sound like they just got some final work on the cold storage building, but I know probably truly can't appreciate it if you haven't been out there before. They started doing all the work to see how much they've actually dug down in some places and filled in in others, the road they built. It, it, they've done a great job. So, I just wanted to say, great job to the public work staff out there. Second thing is October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. That's why you'll start seeing fire department, the firefighters start wearing their pink shirts. So, if you see them, that's why they're wearing pink. Proud to wear pink for the support of breast cancer awareness. And I believe EMS also does that through the month of October as well. Third is I wanted to push, or say thanks to the Commission for adding the massive ground and air solution to the insurance package for the employees. Personally speaking, this year, I had a child that had an accident and it was an eighty-eight thousand dollar bill to get him flown from the ski resort down to, to the hospital. So, if an employee ever has to use that, that's a big benefit that we're not passing that burden on to the employee. And last is we have actually some chance for weather, not just looking forward to the moisture, but just be aware. They are calling for sixty, seventy mile an hour winds, slight chance for tornadoes and up to tennis ball size hail, starting mid-afternoon later into the evening. So, just be aware of that and that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
County Commission Reports?
Uh, I attended K L P G meeting on Friday and listened to a number of presenters. Looks for some upcoming opportunities, possibly some partnership opportunities for maybe some improved funding on roads and bridges and stuff like that. So, I'd also like to thank Fort Hayes for the invitation to the homecoming. That was a wonderful time. And I'd like to congratulate all the local teams on their participations over the weekend in their games. There were some very successful ones.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I participated, Nathan, in those same things, K L P G, Thursday evening and Friday, thanks to the legislators that came and spoke to us. I did take away, I got some things written down on some ideas that hopefully, the state can, we can work with the state and kind of get some projects going out here. I spent an hour with Anita at the EMS during the week, just going over there, doing some fantastic work, but there's also some challenges that we're working through. So, I appreciate her time kind of filling me in on her department. Enjoyed the game at Fort Hayes. And then I also ran into some city employees who just gave me some thanks on some of the coordination that the city and county have been doing. This one in particular was thankful for the fiber project that we'll be working on together. So, I think we're doing some good work in, in reaching across different aisles and working with our legislators and our city people. And it's, so it was kind of a, a fun week for me in this role. Thank you.
Okay, I did also, I just went to Thursday night because I had a class reunion on Friday, but there was some interesting talk, the keynote speaker on what you thought, but Tony was excellent with the FBI or KBI, I'm sorry. I could have listened to him for a little longer, all the information that he had given out. And I did make it over to Ellis last night, pretty short and sweet meeting, but they appreciate one of us coming or whatever. But then I also did go to the Oktoberfest to do one of the opening speeches for the county and everybody was appreciative of that. And I'd also like to thank all the volunteer firefighters and the whole staff of Ellis County for what they've done. We've got a lot of good, a lot of good brains and a lot of good heads on shoulders. I appreciate that, so that's all I have.
All right, with that, I'll move, we go into executive session. The Board of County Commissioners recessed to executive session for ten minutes, due to the following exception in Kansas Open Meetings Act pursuant to attorney-client privilege exception. Subject to be discussed during the executive session is contract negotiations. Session will, open session will resume at, make sure I get the right time here, nine fifty?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.